Good evening, San Bernardino. Thank you guys for joining me tonight for an agenda review for the meeting that is coming up this Wednesday. I will make sure that we are live and everybody can jump on. There's a lot of important things. This is a big meeting for many different aspects that are important to the community. So I'll give it one sec. Okay. Alright, so I wanna cover this in a couple different ways. There's closed session, there's open session. So we're gonna go back and forth for a minute and look at everything that's going on. So tomorrow night, or I'm sorry, Wednesday night at four o'clock, they will be going into closed session to discuss the lawsuits against John Valdivia for sexually harassing his female staff. So as you guys know, like in 2020, it became, you know, known to the public that he was harassing his female staff, bullying and harassing his male staff. And they filed lawsuits because the city didn't do anything and there was investigation. And so this has been going on for four years now. That the city and the taxpayers of San Bernardino have been funding all of this litigation. And I wanna make sure that we bring this up because the type of money that we put out as a city, as residents, to cover the lawsuits of our elected officials is just unreal. If you guys remember when the council, the left side of the council, along with Bessin and Henry voted to reduce the salaries of the elected city attorney and elected city clerk. And we got sued. And then Sandra Barra decided to go post a bunch of stuff on Facebook. And so we got sued. You guys paid three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. And then Valdivia goes out and he sexually harasses his staff and harasses, you know, the people in general, and we get sued. There is this pattern. And and at the same time, our liability, the amount of money that we have to initially cover before our insurance will kick in goes up, what we are initially responsible for. What makes this matter even, I think, more important for us as a community to talk about? Is at the same time Wednesday night that we're going to be discussing the money and the lawsuits because they just did an intermediation with the with the young ladies, is that Charles Montoya went and hired the previous city manager of Atalanto, who in himself was fired because of sexual harassment allegations against him. And then this, uh, Charles Montoya hires Rochelle Clayton from the city of Menifee, who was literally still on administrative leave for an investigation into employee conduct. We are doing nothing to change the pattern in our city of who we hire. And this, of course, like, why? Why would Charles Montoya even care, given the fact that he is literally under investigation by the Attorney General, Attorney General of Arizona? So it's, man, you can't make it up. You just really can't make this up. And we are literally on the forefront of always being the laughing stock of the inland empire of bringing people here who can't get hired anywhere else, who are looking to jump. And and that is very worrisome, especially because this is a time we should be, we should be rebuilding. This is a time we should be investing into the community and instead we're paying lawsuits and we're putting ourselves right in in the way of of potential lawsuits again, because people like, why do you have to learn from anything when you can just hop over to another entity? So that's what's on the agenda for the lawsuits for John. And then this is the issue in conjunction with those potential lawsuits. So alright, that is for our closed session. Now we're going to jump into the agenda, agenda. Okay. So again, closed sessions at four, you can go speak directly to these lawsuits and then open session starts at five P M. There is, uh, at five, the invocation, uh, the appointments. So Theodore Sanchez is appointing Casey Daly to the downtown advisory, general plan advisory, measure S, and the planning commission. I don't know if you guys know, but Mr. Daly was previously a candidate for the first ward many years ago. Um, used to work for the city in the city or the mayor's office and has a impressive record in in his current field of of energy. And so, um, this will be, this is definitely someone who knows. Well, you know, I talk a lot about qualifications. This is somebody who definitely knows what they're talking about. So, um, that I don't know, I don't know why Theodore has no one else to go on any of his stuff, but um, you know, if Casey can do all this, you know, cheers to Casey. So there's also gonna be a presentation of citizens of the month. So Darnetta Smith, Claudia Chavez, B. Galvez, Teles, and Spirited Texas. Well, you guys know that's the best place. Janice Robinson and then Ben Gutierrez. And so they will all be presented with their citizen of the month. Then there's gonna be a proclamation for child abuse prevention month for the city as well as a proclamation of National Therapy Animal Day in San Bernardino. So, um, those will be great. Then the city manager will give their update and public comments. This is the time where you can hear things that are on, or I'm sorry, speak to things that are on or off the agenda. So um, this is a regular meeting. Uh, the first thing that will hit, and this will start about eight o'clock, is a public hearing. And this is really important because this is a lot. And it's not even something that you and I could cover in any short amount of time. I want you to see that this, what we're talking about, literally starts on page sixty-eight of the agenda. And the next item doesn't start till four, I'm sorry, till five, page five hundred and eight. So we're like talking over four hundred and fifty pages, like four hundred and fifty pages of of just information. And it's a lot. Now, I am not one at all to support something this large, a, a, over, you know, a four hundred and fifty page document uh, to be addressed in a public hearing with other things on the agenda. In fact, another public hearing and then open discussions. I think this is really important and vital, given the fact that you are proposing substantial amendments to uh, the fiscal year as long as with the actual plan. So in this, the public hearing, and we can go to the pages. They're talking about reallocations of funds uh, to Nicholson Park. They're talking about the housing plan. So let's go into and even the recommendations, like you really have to go into, it's just approve the substantial amendments, approve the resolution, but understanding what they're doing. So city staff is requesting to conduct a public hearing to provide the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed substantial amendments to twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, for the C D B G to reallocate unexpended funds for the complete projects and or movement of funds from stagnated projects to active projects. So the first one is they, there, they were allocated, uh, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to the Encanto Community Center. And then there was a million eighty thousand-ish approved for street improvements. Neither of these funds have been touched for the Encantos, or I'm sorry, for the streets improvements, but for the Encanto, um, there was like a re- reorganization of how they were going to approach this. And so they didn't need what they needed. So they wanna take that money and they wanna move one point seven-ish into Nicholson Park. And as you guys, if you saw Councilwoman Calvin, um, there is a large investment finally going into Nicholson Park. So this is something that they're going to be discussing. Um, the funds, let's see, this is a substantial amendment. And then reprogramming the C D B G funds will allow the city to better utilize federal funds and continue to follow up HUD regulations regarding timely expenditures of grant funds, specifically C D B G for reallocating stagnated funds to Nicholson Park. Okay, so here's, here's my thing. And maybe I'm wrong. I possibly, we must seek some type of clarification in this. So this is the, now we're, now we're going to be presented with a four hundred, you know, the four hundred and fifty pages. The conclusion, approve the substantial amendment. So this is the substantial amendment. And I guess that's everything into adjustment of this fiscal and management service plan. I, I guess, like, I, I'm not, and this is why I hope it's being clarified because in in this plan that the city has attached, it's a consolidated plan. It's the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five. Um, there's a lot of stuff in here. It's about housing, um, hope, like, C D B G, home services, homeownership, economic development, fair housing service. It's a lot. It's a, a lot. So wherever this thing for Nicholson Park falls in, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure. And so I think, one, if this is something that, um, you wanna know more about, please pull the agenda and go through every aspect. If, if from way I'm reading the agenda is that this, we are only talking about Nicholson Park. And however, that modification speaks to the strategic plan. So that's what I know about, um, that item. Okay, so we're not gonna go through everything, you know. I know that you guys have picked some stuff you wanna go through, which I'm super happy about. But that is important. So, um, if you support that, that is a public hearing. As always, remember, you can go and speak at the, uh, regular public comments on or off the agenda. And then at the public hearings, you get to speak again. You get an additional up to three minutes to speak on that specific item, um, outside of what you originally spoke on. And there are two public hearings. And the other one, so this means that for this meeting on Wednesday, you have the opportunity to actually speak. If you came to closed session, uh, beginning open in these two public hearings, you could speak for twelve, twelve minutes. That would be, you have an opportunity to speak four times. Now with the public hearings, as opposed to closed session and and open session, you have to speak directly to these items. So, um, if you're gonna come and you wanna talk about this substantial amendment, strictly to that. Um, number nine, conduct a public hearing and introduce ordinance and development code of emergency shelter overlay. So, um, without getting into the weeds, we'll just go into the discussion because basically what's happened is there's been, um, legal changes to, uh, what constitutes a, a, um, a place to create an emergency shelter. And so the city is trying to update uh, their ordinances to match the ability to to house. But here's something that's interesting. This is, and I think was very worrisome, if you guys watched that special meeting on homelessness. There literally is no plan in place for anything right now. Like, the best that we had before the court stepped in was, um, hotel vouchers. And we were told those hotel vouchers did nothing. And then come to this count, to the council special meeting. And Councilwoman Calvin did an amazing job of asking, like, well, what are we doing right now? Like, what steps have we taken? What processes do we have in place? And you guys, we have nothing. We have nothing kicking off until November. And that's if everything, you know, stays the way it's supposed to be. So all of these modifications, the fact that the city literally held a meeting to tell us they're not doing anything. We've had over fifty-two million dollars in all of this state and federal funding come together. And we can't get people out of the parks. Our city is literally just becoming, um, a, 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 a tent city. And when you, and when Montoya, when he's questioned on this, and he's been here coming up six months now, it's, you know, council members, we're doing everything. And I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, there's things that are in the works, but I can't talk about them because we haven't quite worked it all out. Like, there's nothing. There's nothing. And remember, tiny homes were proposed, um, con- hotel conversions were proposed just with within the city. They did that with the, the project, um, turnkey and the, the corruption, rela, stole money. Like, you guys, this is falling apart. And so when I watch these type of ordinance shifting and trying to, you know, look at, you know, commercially, I've, hey, go get a warehouse. Go get one of those huge warehouses and convert it into a multi-story transitional dormitory style place. Men on one floor, women on the other, and women and children and families on the top, and then wraparound services on the bottom. I don't understand how, when we look at all this, the max were being able to contribute to a population of upwards of two thousand homeless people. It's five hundred beds. Like, it's crazy. So that's just speaking to all of that is, is really, um, it's a lot. Okay. Then there's discussion items. We're gonna come back to this. So this is the discussion, uh, and provide direction on whether to pursue the center of, um, Councilmember Kimberly Calvin. So we'll come back, because I know it's gonna be a topic for you guys. So then adopt an urgent, uh, an urgency ordinance restricting truck traffic on certain roadway segments within the city limits. So these are the truck routes. Finally, um, but not totally. So it's recommended that the mayor and council of San Bernardino amend section ten point two, four point one nine oh of the City of San Bernardino Municipal Code to restrict commercial vehicles with a gross vehicle weight of thirty thousand pounds, specifically University Parkway, State Street, from the eastern ramp of the two-ten to baseline, and then Pepper Avenue from Ninth Street to Randall Avenue. Very important, especially with all the money that we're putting into this and the development. But hey, there are, how about stop letting these big trucks in the neighborhoods? Where is that truck route? I don't know where you guys live, but I can wake up and on my way to school or on my way to work, turn a corner and there's an eighteen wheeler literally parked like, in a small little residential street. I was over by the golf course not more than a couple of weeks ago. And right next to the elementary school are two large eighteen-wheelers just parked. Do we have to do more than just this? And it's been a couple of years, Ben, uh, and Damon have been talking about this over and over again. And so while these streets are great, there's so much more. The on and off to these warehouses are on the major thoroughfares, and that's where they need to stay. So, uh, next is the city manager's preliminary proposed biennial, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six operating capital budgets. So we can definitely look at that. Some of you have requested that one. So go to page five sixty-three. Okay. So, uh, the city has adopted a biennial budget planning process, which I don't fully support. While this process includes adopting the budget annually, every two years, the city goes through the process of budgeting for two full years. Forecasting revenue expenditures and capital spending. This is why I don't support this. Because even though, like, you're looking at it yearly, every two years, they go through this, this full process for two-year projections. And I'll give you a great example of why this kind of doesn't work the way it should is, um, they brought, the council brought this up about cannabis tax, right? The last time that this, this council sat down and was given a review, they were given the same numbers on the ability to collect cannabis tax. Well, nothing's changed. And they can't forecast because there, there's been no additional way to recoup this type of revenue. So I think there needs to be far more eyes on the budget yearly and semiannually. Like, there's no way, or biannually, there's no way that, um, this should be this should be every two-year process, um, for the larger, larger look at it. So, alright. Alright, revenues are projected to end fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four at approximately two hundred and eighteen million. This represents an increase of ten million over the twenty-three, twenty-four budget for revenues of two hundred and eight million. The city has seen revenue increase year over year from sales and use tax and measure S as well as other revenue streams, including franchise fees, license and permits, which include developer fees streams, including, I'm sorry, uh, developer fees driven by increasing development, industrial, commercial, and residential within the city. Investment income, which is driven by higher interest rates, improving the rate of return on the city's investments. Okay. And this is what we'll get into, what I was talking about. However, in the last two years, the cost of fuel underlying utilities has increased exponentially, driving the cost of utilities up as much in this category of revenue, nineteen percent. Fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and is anticipated continue to grow. Cannabis revenues have been surprisingly low over the last year. These revenues have been lower than anticipate anticipated primarily due to illegal competition cutting into the profits of legal operations. Absolutely not. Absolutely not. You're not even collecting the taxes of the legitimate business. What a lie. Because that is not at all. That is not even close to what was said in that last meeting. So rather than go out and tell the truth, which is we, which they said, we didn't have the ability to collect these taxes and 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 we're relying on the state, now it's all of these illegal cannabis businesses that are cunning and get out of here. Have you guys ever driven by cookies? Their place is constantly haven, uh, like, come on. Stizzy's. These places are making money hand over fist. We are just not doing what we need to do to get that money. And you know why? Because it sounds like someone else is making some money somewhere else on the side, so you don't have to pay your taxes. This was supposed to be the ultimate revenue driver for us. I mean, it's a billion-dollar industry to sell weed to people. Like, stop. That is the most ridiculous statement. And you know what? It's Montoya's. That's Montoya's statement. So, ew, no. Statewide, the decrease in cannabis tax collections in twenty-twenty-three was nearly nine percent. Experts anticipate that this trend will not continue as the state is expected to crack down on illegal operators. How about you just get the money from the legal ones? So we have this surplus. That's ridiculous. We're not collecting what we're collecting. Just a month ago, it was because of a, uh, you know, taxes. Now it's all these illegal industries. But yet not one single person asked for an increase in code enforcement strategically designed to go in and shut down illegal cannabis stores. So, you know, how much of a problem really could that be? Alright, we're looking at budgets. So the mayor's budget is looking to go up eleven thousand. City council's budget is increasing about a hundred thousand. City clerk went down. Legal services is at five point five million. General government is going up to thirteen minute. City manager, check this out. The city manager's budget for twenty-three, twenty-four amended is at three million, four hundred thousand. And is going up proposed over the years between to five point one million to five point seven million dollars. That's crazy. That is, that is crazy. Like, uh, when you, when we need streets paved, when we need, um, admin, like I just talked about, code enforcement, like, that's a lot. So be prepared for that one. Alright. Parks and Recreation. So focus areas for park and recreation services department include improvements to the city's parks, uh, community centers, ensuring access to services for seniors, increasing the services offered at parks and community centers, and adding to youth sports and aquatics. Super agree. Park and Recreation added six positions in twenty-three, twenty-four, including the four positions for Park Ranger Program that were later transferred to the police department. These and two other positions, the Deputy Director and Community Recreation Program Supervisor, were intended to improve the quality of service for the community and the ability of our parks and recreation staff to provide service. Park and Recreation has two program coordinators positioned with the mid-year follow-up item before the mayor and council uh, on Wednesday. These two positions are grant-funded through December of twenty-twenty-four, uh, which the city will need to find additional grant funding, fund the positions with the general fund, or not fund the positions. So they're looking to request two more. And there would, there would be no payout for us for the first six months, but then after, um, we would be responsible. So library services. Um, increasing staff and the brand, uh, in branch libraries, increasing resources. During twenty-twenty-three, uh, library services added two full-time positions, one library technician and one management analyst. While those positions added over the last three years have allowed the libraries to expand hours and improve services, they are still behind and require additional support. The Library Services Department is requesting one additional library technician to continue to improve branch level services. The additional cost is approximately eighty-two thousand with salary and benefits and other costs, I T office supplies, et cetera. The library service budget is proposed to increase seventy percent from twenty-twenty-three amended two point nine to the proposed four point nine million as the city invests more in library operations and technology. This, I couldn't support more. This is so awesome. And I am so proud of the library board and, um, the director, can't think of his name, but you know, Ed, uh, for finally taking this initiative to really push, like, libraries and education will shift a large outcome for our community and having access to one of the last free real services. Um, so, oh my God, yes, perfect. Finally, we are investing, and that is wonderful. With the addition of the one position and the transfer out of two, the total library staff will be twenty-one full-time equivalent positions. So very awesome. Fully support library. Investing into Public Works Operations and Maintenance. So focus for the Public Works Department include clean and safe streets, infrastructure resilience, community outreach and education, and environmental stewardship. Department management is also focused on recruitment and retention since operational challenges due to understaffing or ongoing issue. Public Works is requesting the following additional positions, one engineering technician and one N P D S inspector, too, the breakdown of the costs. So we understand, like, one, going through Public Works and getting all of these, all, all the things that we need, the inspections and this, like, this idea of melding into a one-stop shop is important. And a lot of things we did have been contracted out. So being able to bring people in-house and fund positions where people are like at work, ready to do stuff, this is good. Five total positions were added in twenty-three, twenty-four. These were one landscape development engineer, and then engineering project managers, there's three of them, and one capital projects manager. Public Works proposed budget budget is thirty-five million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, a two point one percent increase over last year. And everything's going up. I'm actually really shocked. It's that small of an increase, giving the cost of like everything that Public Works has to do. Um, it should be noted that Public Works proposed budget decreased by the amount of the citywide security contract, which was transferred to the police department. Oh, okay, cool. Total staffing in Public Works will be a hundred and forty-three, full-time equivalent. Alright, public safety, here we go. It's a lot. Alright, focus areas on the police department are quality of life for the community, public engagement, organizational effectiveness, employee development, recruitment and retention. The police department added thirteen critical positions, not including the three park rangers and one park ranger supervisor, which were initially added to the park and recreation department and then transferred. There are also eleven positions that have been brought forward with the item, uh, for the mayor and council, which will be eleven positions. And three are police dispatchers. A recent study conducted to evaluate the number of staff needed is effectively respond to calls and, uh, for service determined that the police dispatch center is significantly understaffed, given the number of calls of service. Oh, I can't even imagine, like, the, I think when we went there for, um, for the coffee with the cop, and they did the, the thing with the dispatcher. I mean, you're talking like thousands and thousands of calls, just crazy. Um, police, uh, the police department is requesting an additional four police dispatchers in addition to the three mentioned above. One police dispatch supervisor, one police dispatch manager, and for a total of six positions and a budgetary impact of six hundred and ninety-two thousand. Oh, that's good. So my hope is, and I, I'm pretty sure, is that these are all civilians that will be taking these positions. I don't believe the police dispatch managers are cops, but I, I, I will double check that. Um, but I think that's Um, but I think that's why this is so much lower than if you were hiring um cops. So I, but I'll double check, but I know dispatchers are, are civilians, but I believe the supervisors and managers get to be civilian as well. The Police Department is also requesting an ongoing operational increase of seven hundred thousand to contract custodial transport services. To transport individuals who have been arrested to the county facility in Ranch Cucamonga. Currently patrol officers must transport individuals to pursuit, to facilities, which takes a great deal of time. That could be better used. Yes, we've been asking, San Bernardino, how long have we been asking for this? So that our cops don't have to go from call to jail back. I mean, that, you're talking hours. Um, finally, thank you, Chief Goodman, for requesting something that is just so logical. And unnecessary. You, you know, the thought was, they were originally gonna try to open up a jail here, which was just been an exuberant amount of millions of dollars. When Chief Goodman right here, seven hundred thousand dollars for, for you to transport and the amount of people that are literally being arrested. Oh my gosh, so. This to me is like one of the better things that have come out of the Police Department a lot of years, along with bringing back a civilian force, so. Very cool. Although I'm gonna say, here we go, um, at the same time. A hundred and thirty-one million dollars, a nine percent increase. It's a lot of money. And as always, I'm just going to be that, that fiscally um questioned person. We have to be very careful. We have to be so very careful with public safety. Now, the burden for us. Uh, is that the Police Department is our only public safety department. However, our taxes, our, our property tax that would help supplement and offset these costs don't even come to us. So this is what it takes for us to maintain our own public safety. And rely, you know, have the county in fire on one end, but not being able to have any additional income from. The actual property tax, which was such a big, big thing for us. Um, so this is what comes with it. Because of what I see, the level of transparency with the transition of, of Chief Goodman. You know, I can support this, cause in the past, just I haven't, I, 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 um, always, you know, like fiscal audits. And that's actually something Chief Goodman put in when he first got here, was the same year that we were talking, that I talked about is the same year he did it, saying. Is everything that you are doing within the budget that you have, like, do you really need all this extra money? Cause again, they're gonna ask for cars. Uh, later on in the agenda, so very, very interesting. Okay. The Police Department will have four hundred and sixty full-time equivalent positions. If the fourteen full-time equivalent positions proposed in the previous item before. Our approved, the Police Department will have four hundred and seventy-four full-time equivalent positions. But that's not officer positions, everybody, it's everybody included. Okay, human resources and risk management and finance and management services. Human resources and finance are internal service departments. Internal service departments ensure. That the departments that are public facing have adequate resources and support that they need. Okay, uh, focuses for human resources and man, risk management include policy updates, the organization, organization-wide classification and compensation study. And improvements to recruitment and onboarding processes. The HR Department is requesting the additional one senior office assistant to assist with administrative tasks. HR is possible for a significant amount of confidential information. And then the senior office assistant will be invaluable in helping the department ensure that all confidential information. Is appropriately maintained according to law. I have to laugh, you guys, when I was with the city. There was three of us, well, three and a half of us in civil service. And at the end, like HR had three people. So, I mean, they've got, they have eighteen people now. In human resource and risk management with less employees than we have when we were in the bankruptcy. I don't know if I fully support this type of expenditure, like. It, this really should become a streamlined process. They have an eight, you know, in, in HR tech, an analyst two. A supervising HR analyst, like. That's, that's a lot. And, and, and on top of this, we're literally outsourcing our largest recruitments. HR is not handing any director of recruitments, like, we're paying Coffin Associates and Bob Holland Associates. To do our largest recruitment. So I, I'm not here for this. I don't support this. I think HR needs to do more. Um, with what they're already being paid for. We could have a big cost savings of right now, a minimum of fifty thousand dollars. If they would have handled the director's stuff. And we probably would have an additional two point two million if Susie Soren hadn't brought us into a lawsuit. Um, with Kerrigan as the HR director, so. Yeah, I'm not, I don't support this one. And then finance is looking for an accounting technician, three, and IT additional cost and payroll. They do a lot. Animal Services, um, they are. Continuing to focus on community education. The city has been preparing for in, this increase for the last several months, hiring additional staff. And increasing capacity at the shelter. The mayor and council approved thirty-one additional positions in animal services. And three positions were authorized as a strategic initiative. In October, out of the thirty-four. Okay. Oh, I see. Okay. So these are all. Other positions, deputy directors, registered vet tech, button area assistants, those are us, and then regional partnerships, animal service manager. Um, so, you know, the animal shelter is taking a lot of um. Reorg and shifting, and so it's a. You know, there, it's what's interesting about this conversation, and it always is, right? When we look at how much, how much can we fiscally support going into an animal shelter versus, you know, housing animals versus housing people? And that's always been a balancing act and it always will. Because how do you, how do you sacrifice one versus the other? And how do you allocate for one versus the other? And really, what is the top priority? So, um, good luck to animal services, because that's always going to be the conversation. Um, is, is all of this necessary, given all of the financial struggles that we face in our community with paving, with homelessness? With housing, with public safety, like. Do we, should we really have a forty-four percent increase to our animal shelter? That's, that's a lot, especially when the budget for the animal shelter is gonna be higher than the budget for the library. Yeah, yeah. Interesting, very interesting. Hi, Ron, hi Cathy, Mike, Paula, thank you guys. Jessica, I saw you in here. Um, we're just going through the agenda. This is the, the budget stuff, so I mean, this is really the last big one that we have. So IT is doing their thing. I mean, I give it up to IT, all the fun stuff that you could do. They take care of everything. Fleet Services. Is not asking for much liability funding. Okay, here we go. Let's look at liability funding. So the liability fund has experienced significantly increased claims in the last twelve to eighteen months. Yeah, everybody's suing us because we're so sueable. Staff recommended an increase during the mid-year budget report of seven million dollars to compete, complete the fiscal year. We just paid four point four million dollars for a shooting. We have a two point two million dollar claim. Uh, the downtown developer now has filed their lawsuit. You guys get ready. Get ready for a lot of money to be expended, because the city is just absolutely vulnerable to their nonsense. The liability fund budget must be increased to ensure the funds are available to meet the needs, so. Um, you know, BB and K are city attorney, as well as, you know, everybody else is making a lot of money. Capital improvements, the CIP, there are currently seventy-one ongoing active projects, which limits the capacity to add new projects. Um, this is a list, we won't go into everything. Let me see if I, oop, I skipped it, I skipped it, I'm sorry. Um, but it's a lot. It's a lot, a lot. So that's, that's really it for this, like, there's gonna be a presentation, you guys will get to be watched and odd and enjoy all of that, so. Um, but those are the main things coming out of each department. Other than that. Like I said, and I, I just, for me, this, these big of items. Shouldn't be in one agenda, cause li, didn't the council literally vote, like, we're not gonna stay here after ten o'clock? Like, I don't care if you start at five, this, this is more than a five-hour conversation, cause you have one hour of public comments, like, I, you know. I just think you should always be here and ready to hear more things. Um, then after that, this is where the council in the last meeting. Um, proposed eight positions. This is where Teddy thought he was running the city council. And, and added additional twelve positions, but the city manager. So let's look at this real quick. This is on page six twenty-four. And see what's being proposed. Twelve. I hope that's, I hope that's in conjunction with his budget. Okay, okay. No, wait. Yes. Okay, the mayor and council recommended the following additional positions and reclassifications to approve. Efficiency, so two program coordinators in Park and Recreation, three community service officers in the Police Department. One administrative analyst for the city council, one manager in the city council office, and additional records management. Specialists in the city clerks. The city manager recommends the following positions. One administrative assistant to split, to split between the city manager and the mayor's office. Okay. Eleven positions in the Police Department, so three CSOs for a total of six. Five record checks and three police dispatchers. So I, I, if I'm not mistaken, this is in addition to what they're already proposing. That's, that's a lot. Um. Here's, okay, so I'm, what, what was proposed in the budget. I, I can get behind with the absence of, of HR. And I understand the need for help. In the city council office and the mayor. I can, I can get that, cause they're, they're fielding calls for eight people. But everything else, uh, like. Here's the thing, where's the money coming from? Like, we just showed, yes, we have a ten million dollar surplus and that's, but a portion that has to go into the general fund. We wanna put money away. These are long-lasting pension costs for us. And what I don't see on here again is one of these, like, these are all with, you know. With the exception of PD, these are all sit-in-office people. These are not out in the work, in, in the, in the city people, like, when we talk about code enforcement, we, like, business registration inspectors, like. We need people to go get us money. We need people to go make sure that stuff is getting done. So I, I hope there's more questions in how this coordinates. With everything we just looked at in the previous item, so. Yeah, we need to be really fiscally responsible. Like, guys, we can go into bankruptcy so quickly. Like, so quick. It'll make your head spin, because we are bad with money. So, like I said, big discussion items, how it's all playing together, um, that'll be read out. So, okay, I'm just making this easier, just in case we wanna jump to anything. Alright, so you got those, um. Then you have the consent calendar, so they're approving, this is non-discussion items unless somebody pulls it. So funding for animals, services and preparation of the regional partnership agreement. Response to a grand jury report, who let the dogs out of Tale of Two Cities, so this is about like dog bites, if you guys haven't read it. So they're certifying the results of the primary election, so. Stir, yes, we are going to certify that I am in the runoff and then we will see you all in November, very excited about that. Resolution declaring intent to annex territory, Ward Three. Adoption of the ordinance to levy a special tax to be collected. And annual maintenance services for landscaping, another annex territory in the third ward. Another annex in Ward One. The payroll distribution, I went through it, I didn't see anything um, that caught my eye right now, but I'm sure things will come up. Designation, so if eh, there's ever a, an emergency, all of these people can be called to or can call a state of emergency if necessary. A side letter agreement with the POA for um planned contributions for their benefits. Uh, adopting job classifications for citywide salary, amending administrative analysts. Establishing a land development engineer job classification, amending citywide salary schedules. Again, remember I'm telling you. We really need to double, triple check. How we are going to be able in the very long run, sustain these costs and sustain these positions. Because this will get us into trouble, very, very big trouble. Award of construction agreement for the police HVAC control system. Approve a contract with Cabrera Engineering for Pepper Avenue Rehabilitation Project. Purchase police vehicles, I told you, they're going to um, buy, I think, like sixteen cars or something. From their Ford, and then accept a grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars, so. Um, like I said, there's a lot, definitely something that everybody needs to be aware of. And following up on, because. Um, this is, this is the thing, big things are happening. And I'm gonna be one hundred with you guys on the city manager. Don't trust him. I just, I don't trust anything. That he's about, that he is reporting with money, because the people he's putting us with are yes people. And he has a horrible history, a very horrible history. So I wanna cover real quick before we go. The item ten on Councilwoman Calvin. And the proposed uh, decision to look into censuring her. And I wanna make a couple of things clear before we do that. So when you as a recruiter for the city of San Bernardino, call a candidate named Steve Kerrigan. And allegedly violate closed session and disparage our black council members, so we're hit with a two point two million dollar claim. Our city attorney Sonia Carvallo does nothing. And the recruiters and his company gets to go away and still get paid twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the recruitment. And that was the man that was named in the claim of Steve Kerrigan, Frank Rojas from Coffin Associates. When you as a recruiter for San Bernardino. Call a candidate Steve Kerrigan and allegedly tell him that it's San Bernardino's fault that he didn't get the job in Pacific Grove. So that we're hit with a two point two million dollar claim. Our city attorney Sonia Carvallo doesn't do anything. Our city manager gives the recruiter another contract for thirty-six thousand dollars. And that was Gary Phillips and Bob Hall and Associates. When you as the HR director for the city of San Bernardino, call a candidate Steve Kerrigan. Violate closed session and accept responsibility for his job loss in Salinas. So that he can hit us with a two point two million dollar claim. Our city attorney Sonia Carvallo doesn't do anything. The city manager. Gives you a ninety thousand dollar promotion to deputy city manager. When you as the economic development director for San Bernardino, go out and publicly, publicly violate an exclusive negotiation agreement. With the developer of the downtown redevelopment, RD Ico, so that we now get hit with a lawsuit. Our city attorney Sonia Carvallo does nothing. And the employee Nathan Freeman gets to quit. And on his way out, follow, file false claims against the councilwoman who questioned the emails. That came from community telling what he did. When you as the city manager and economic development director for San Bernardino. Allow a false application for the surplus land act to be submitted to the state of California. Our city attorney Sonia Carvallo does nothing. And the employees, Robert Field, the city manager, and Mike Huntley, the director of economic development. Get to quit with no questions asked. But when you, as a sitting councilwoman. Make a motion to expand a recruitment to get better candidates for city manager. Make a motion to immediately end the recruitment process after there's a violation of confidentiality ethics. After there's a violation of confidentiality ethics and a sabotage of a candidate that led to their withdrawal. After you openly question the director of economic development on emails sent out by residents about him violating the E N A. After you openly question the city manager on the surplus land act process and the lack of transparency the city is providing the ad hoc committee about the downtown. Our city attorney Sonia Carvallo sits back and watches the corrupt left side of our council try to censure you. And that is exactly what item and ten is all about. That every single one of those people went out, violated closed session. Broke contract agreements, lied to the state of California. Took money from the city and put us in in front of a bullet train of lawsuits. And the corrupt elected officials on the left side of the dais decided that Kimberly Calvin is the problem. Because she's the only elected official who was asking questions about all the wrongdoing that was going on, and those motions that she made to expand the recruitment, they voted against. When she vo- when she made the motion acknowledging that a candidate had been sabotaged, that closed session had been violated, confidentiality and ethics, they voted against her. To keep moving forward, because isn't it funny that the candidate they wanted was still in the running? And the candidate candidate that was sabotaged, they didn't care about. That's what item ten is about. That's why taxpayers, this H R director is sitting in the city as a deputy city manager. Who told someone, we are responsible for you, everything that happened to you was our fault, she said. And Charles Montoya and Sonia Carvallo have had this in their hands since November thirtieth. And she was promoted in February. So you will pay two-point-two million dollars and she will make an extra ninety thousand dollars a year. And they want an investigation done into Kimberly Calvin. Because that's what corruption, that's what B B and K's history is. So tomorrow, I'm sorry, Wednesday. Closed session starts at four P M, and that's where we'll be talking about sexual harasser John Valdivia. The fired city manager from Adelanto who sexually harassed his staff, who is now a director in our city. The on-suspension now hired deputy city manager Rochelle Cochran. Who are all in line with the under investigation by the Attorney General of Arizona City Manager, Charles Montoya. And at five P M, all of that great budget stuff, in addition to whether the corrupt left side of our council. Is going to try and censure Councilwoman Ki- Kimberly Calvin for asking the questions that needed to be asked. For trying to run a legitimately ethical recruit- recruitment and bring us the best city manager. So I'm asking you guys to show up, stand up and speak up. Because like I said, this city will go bankrupt again. Because the people that are running it don't care about it. And they're using us as a piggy bank, and the poor decisions they're making are making other people rich, along with B B and K. And B B and K, what they like to do is, Thomas Rice loved to stand up and say, they don't go to jail. Just the council members that they represent. We have a problem in San Bernardino. And so Wednesday, please come out, please make it, speak up, speak out. And I will see you there, so thank you so much for watching this, please feel free to share. And um I'll follow up in the comments, alright, thanks, guys.